How do we have any?
Call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM.
Hear ye, hear ye.
Motion to adopt the agenda for changes or additions. Counselor Cutler. Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to adopt the agenda as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Adoption of regular minutes February 26, 2024.
I'll make a motion to adopt the regular meeting minutes of February 26, 2024 as presented.
Counselor Zimmer, question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to adopt the regular council meeting minutes of February 26, 2024 as presented.
All in favor? Approved. We have an allegation. Chinook watershed crew.
Yes, so we have the Chinook watershed crew joining us here to talk about a water symposium that is coming up in April, and I will turn it over to them to introduce themselves and discuss that with council.
Thank you. My name is Rod Brunis. This is Roy Pennick. We live in the community, the MD of Willow Creek, and what we're here to do is we sent a letter to the town, and what we'd like to do is talk to you. We're hosting a water forum, Water Dried Up What's Next, is a video that's going to be shared at this thing on Monday, April 15th, at the Clare's Home Community Center. Doors will open at 5:00 PM, and there'll be complimentary food at the event. Me and Roy request to be included in this meeting because of the fact that we'd like to share some information with you guys as far as the purpose of the event is to create a greater awareness for the drought preparedness mitigation among other communities in the Porcupine Hills and the Willow Creek region from High River to Fort McLeod. And the Old Man Watershed Council will be presenting some slides at this presentation and background information. There it will be followed by the premiering of this documentary, which is Dried Up What Now, and it's being produced by Kevin Van Teigen and Jan Label. There will be a panel session after the presentations, and on the panel, there will be some experts like Cheryl Bradley. She's a biologist, watershed planning. Kim Wachler from Burke Creek Ranch. James Byrne, professor of geography and environment at the University of Leford. Stuart Rude, research professor at the University of Lefridge, and Kevin Van Teigen is the moderator. We would like to invite everybody to come from the town or the surrounding area to attend this event because of the simple fact that we're going to be sharing the information that I think a lot of people know. The MD is going to come along and provide fire smart and have some exhibits and all sorts of other things like that. So to increase the awareness of everybody as far as with regards to the drought and how serious it is. I think everybody can appreciate that. We all know what's going on here. We all get the numbers. We're at a level four, and you know, what are the next steps? And I think, I'm not sure, but I'm assuming this town council has been to Lefridge or someplace, and Alberta Environment has gone over, this is the plan when you get your data set and stuff like that, which is supposed to be coming out in March here. And this is what we're trying to do is trying to talk about this sort of stuff and try to increase everybody's level of awareness about wildfires. And the reason being is that we all know this community. We have been subjected to it. I've been here since the Granum one and the one a couple of years ago, last year from here. This is really serious stuff, and I think we're all aware of that. But this will give some insight to that as far as preparation and stuff like that, if nothing else, to increase everybody's awareness about it. So the cost of this event is including the hall rental, sound system, and stuff like that. We're doing quite a bit of that on our own as far as some of us has put up our own money and that type of stuff. We're just requesting if you guys could come up with 500 bucks to go towards this to help pay off some of the food and the rental and all this other stuff. But I just throw that out there. And in recognition for that, I would like to include you guys in the media and that sort of thing. Saying the town is very keen on this and wants to contribute and that sort of thing. Now, I'm going to share something with you that this video, Dried Up What Now, is being played in Lundbrook, I think, next week, and it's sold out. You can't get to it. Marty Loop, it's being sold out. I am going to offer you guys an opportunity, you, to see it yourself if you would like, and that would probably be in the next few weeks after the editing. But I only throw that out there for you guys to see it, to find out or show you what's of interest for us. And this group of us have gotten together, and we've taken on this task to increase awareness with everybody.
Our group, basically, started out as a coffee talking about issues, as there are many. And it became, we started narrowing it down to have something focused that we could develop some credibility. Like, who are we? Well, we're just people. We are part of the community. And I've talked to a lot of people, well, yeah, it's a little dry, but there's lots of water in the river. No, there isn't. We know that, and the numbers are getting staggering. One of the wells, I live south and east of Granum, or southeast of here, east of Granum, on a 519, there's a well north of me that's lost 30 feet ahead over the last 30 years. It's going down a foot a year. We are running out of water. So it's going to take some of us to keep waving the flag here that we have to change in some of the things we do. I drive up to Clare's Home, and I see new pivots going along Highway 2. We're taking more water out of Willow Creek. Where's it coming from? We couldn't fill our pond in Granum last summer because there wasn't any water in the creek. We couldn't pump it. We're, hopefully, we get some more snow. I mean, that will be our cure. I was on the irrigation board in Bow River in the 80 to 86. We were over allocated at that time on irrigation rights across the south. We have been giving out more and more water rates. Efficiency is one thing. Building better irrigation systems through the districts, being canals, pipelines, and linings and all these things, it's more efficient. There's no question. The systems, the pivots are more efficient, but the expansion is just going ahead like there's no problem. And Willow Creek was dry last summer, but we've got three new pivots right along Highway 2 here. Where's the water coming from? Hopefully, we, you know, in 91, the Old Man Dam was completed. They told us it would take three years to fill it. It actually filled the first year. We had one of those years where we had a big snowpack and a big rain in the spring, and therefore, we had enough runoff to fill the reservoir. If that happens again this year, we'll be damn lucky. If we don't get the snow, there's going to be some irrigators that are going to run out of water. And that is part of our economy in Southern Alberta. We live and die by rain and agriculture. Thank you.
So one of the things I want to mention, this was a presentation that was given to you guys by the Alberta government, and it's talking about 2024 drought risk management. And the one slide that got my attention was the key elements and timelines as to what is supposed to be happening over the next fall. And the key one is right where we're at, at March, as far as there's some decisions that have to be made from a political standpoint. But the interesting thing that I was a little bit amazed in this whole presentation by the Assistant Deputy Minister of Environment, Stacy Smith, Smieth. She said, and not once, but numerous times, this is not a government problem. This is a societal problem. And I'm sitting back and thinking, hold it a second here. Hold it a second here. We're all in this same boat together. We all got to pull together. What's the game plan? And how are we going to mitigate this? What are the things that we can do? And then we've all heard the news coming out of West Texas, and as far as the amount of grass that's burning up down there, we don't need a repeat of those types of things. And as a result, we've really got to be vigilant about these types of things. So that's why we reached out to the government to come, and the MLA has been asked to see if she will show up. But I'm not sure if anybody from the government will show up. That's the gist of it, guys. No questions? You made it easy. Oh, good for you.
Have you guys been in contact with our emergency disaster coordinator?
In the town of Clare's Home?
Yeah.
No, no, I have not. I have been in touch with Kelly Sterling. I'm from the MD. I'm not saying you can't, but I sure could.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking that if you want Clare's Home to support, he does fire safety. He does all these kinds of things. I think he'd be the one to talk to to see what he can do to contribute or have some kind of awareness around what the town can contribute to.
Who's that?
Jason Hamaway.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
In that, yeah, in that we're reaching out to everybody who we can to try to get them to come and either put up static displays and stuff like that. The food that we're acquiring and the support that we're getting is all from the community also. It's not coming from elsewhere, different places and stuff like that. Just FYI.
I look forward to it. Thanks.
Okay.
You bet.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Good.
Do you?
Perfect. Okay, action items. Bylaw 1780, North Point Area Structure Plan Bylaw.
So we have bylaw 1780, the first reading of the bylaw to adopt the North Point Area Structure Plan. And we have our engineer, John Crawford, is joining us via Zoom. John, are you with us? Here we go. Hello, John, are you with us?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Can you hear me now?
Urban.
So, John, I just introduced bylaw 1780, which is our bylaw to adopt the area structure plan for North Point. And did you want to share your screen? Do you have that up on your screen? Or did you want to just discuss it to council?
I've got, I've got like a copy of the, of the plan that was provided to council, but I can share my screen if that makes it easier for everybody. I can.
Sure.
All right, sure. I'll share it here. Just. Let me know once you can see it.
We got it.
Awesome. So, yeah, so we prepared the ASP on behalf of the town of Clare's Home and the landowner. And the purpose of it is to develop a framework and guide the subdivision of development. So the plan's approximately 15.2 hectares. And we've gone through the policy in accordance with the municipal government act. And it provides direction regarding the sequencing of development, the distribution form and intensity of development, and the location of transportation networks and municipal infrastructure. So at a high level, we've got the, got the planned area here. It's separated into two zones. One is going to be medium to high density residential, and the other will be commercial use along the Alberta Road corridor. So if I, sorry if I make anybody dizzy here, I'll see what I can do for an area. Yes, so here is our planned area and land use districts. So currently, this is zoned as country residential. In the eventual plan, it will be rezoned as medium to high use residential along the whole west side along 8th Street. So this will no longer be commercial use along 8th Street. It'll all be residential on the west side, and then the east side will all become commercial use property. And there would be the removal of the existing side corridor that's in there right now. So as part of this plan, we, we did a variety of background studies, including our geotechnical report, biophysical assessment, a phase one environmental site assessment, traffic impact analysis, the transportation corridor network, and a conceptual servicing plan from what the utilities would look like in that area. So that's, that's the plan at a high level. Is there anything specifically that council would like to discuss regarding the overall plan and policy regarding this, this ASP?
Any questions, concerns? Counselor Kittles?
My only question is, and maybe this is too early to tell, is, you know, what are the trigger points for, for the town to start having to lay down deep infrastructure and stuff like that? I mean, is it just process? Or, you know, if, if somebody comes in and says, I want to take two of these lots and build a big widget factory, like, at what point do we have to start, you know, planning and putting in some pretty expensive connections?
Well, based on the, the existing infrastructure master plan, the biggest need that we're going to need in the north end of town is, is an upgrade to the existing distribution system and, and water reservoir. So currently, the, the infrastructure master plan kind of highlights that the pumping capacity for, for fire flows is going to be insufficient with any new development that happens, not limited to this area, but also the prairie shores, as well as just it being required as an overall update to the town. So in our conceptual servicing plan, that's, it's outlined as, as needing upgrades to support this development, and that would be, you know, an upgraded pump station and reservoir for the water. The sewer is, is not so complex, but there would be some extensions. And I need to, I can scroll down to those maps real quick just to point those out easier on the screen. Sorry, I just haven't, if you see my screen here.
And I apologize. I don't mean to get you into the weeds or anything. It's just, these things just sometimes struck me as a chicken and egg thing, right? And I'm just wondering if there was any, you know, key points, you know, that when we, when we have to start really getting serious and do some, do some planning around this.
No, absolutely. And I mean, it is, the, the water would be the most considerable upgrade that would be required. So the water needs to be extended from Dorochi Drive up to the end of the development in order to create a looped network. So in order to develop any of the, any of the new commercial lots or the residential lots, an assessment would have to be made of the distribution system to see, and that would need to be done at more of a detailed design phase. But the infrastructure master plan is pointing out that any further development in the north is going to require an upgrade to the distribution system and the water reservoir. So the sanitary servicing is not as bad. It connects through the back of Dorochi Drive, but there is an extension that's required back of basically that Tim Horton's parking lot is where the existing manhole is. So that would need to be extended up along that easement here up into the subdivision. So both things would, would need to happen in tandem in order to start developing any of those lots.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Could I get a motion for bylaw 1780 to adopt the North Point Area Structure Plan, first reading? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to give bylaw 1780 a North Point Area Structure Plan bylaw, first reading.
All in favor? Approved.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Correspondents, Willow Creek Regional Landfill, Abe?
Just one moment, please.
I could come help you.
Yeah.
I'd add YouTube up there or something.
Okay, there we are.
Kate?
Okay. So this is correspondence to council, to the town, from the Willow Creek, Willow Creek Regional Landfill. Just some information on their operations. They've shared their bylaws, their audited financials. Maybe a lot of people, good public information that they are actually commissioned, and they're governed through the MGA and the commission statutes and provisions that we have. So they're legitimate municipal service commission out there at the landfill. And the, they've got the requisition, yearly requisition requests on there as well.
Question, Counselor Cutler?
Man, fellow counselors. You sit on the board, right?
Yes.
So this, laying in its terms for us small-town folk, I go out there with my pickup truck. That minimum charge of $10 is what it is, no matter what I got in the back of that pickup truck, up to 140 kilos, right?
That's correct.
And then the next one is if it's over that, and that, that's the
Yep.
person driving up with the pickup truck kind of just, has that gone up lately?
Yep.
It has?
Yep.
Oh, okay. I thought they were talking, I thought, I thought it's always been $10. That's why I was kind of interested.
I think the minimum's always been $10, but we raised the other two.
Oh, the other two? Oh, okay. Okay, I remember talking about an increase. But that is with the increase in there? Oh, okay, good.
Any other questions?
Requisition has stayed the same.
Yes.
Held steady this year.
Yep. Yes, we do have a large bank account, but when you have to buy a new loader, it's a million bucks.
No, that's good.
You better have a good bank account.
When I had the opportunity to attend the meeting, there's also reclamation money that they have to keep if they ever do have to reclaim, so not allowed to spend it.
You have to be prepared for that.
Yeah, they do.
No, but I do think this is good information that we can put on our website for people to, to realize what it is.
Yes. And the CEO does a good job. Okay, there's no other questions? Correspondents. Clare's Home Kraken Swim Club request. Abe?
So the Kraken, the Kraken Swim Club is requesting some assistance with the pool rental for their home swim meet. That takes place on June 21st and June 22nd. The amount they have requested is $800. Previously, they held this meet in 2019, I think is the last time they held it. And this is the first time they've been able to host it coming out of COVID restrictions and particularly the extended restrictions they had being in an Alberta health facility. So. Yeah, any, any comment or questions from council?
Counselor Cutler?
I love my job sometimes. So they're asking for $800 for the donation, correct? That's what they're asking for, for the weekend of the pool? But they run, they run the, the swim meet, and they keep the profits from the swim meet for themselves, whatever they make on top of that at the swim meet? My, my concern is, is, I love the kids. It's a community organization. It's a community. But I mean, like, if we want to talk about why we donated ice to, to the hockey team, it was a fundraiser for ASTAR's benefits. It was a fundraiser we were sponsoring to go towards. Nobody was profiting off of that. It was, my only concern is when I look at their financials, and they have a substantial amount of money in their bank account. Is that, my, my only concern is, is I just, I just worry that, I don't know. Does anybody share the same thoughts?
Yes.
I, I don't, it's not that I don't want to support local and local sports, but I want to support local sports. Like, do we know where our donation funds are at right now with our budget?
We're still fairly early.
Early, right?
Yes.
So we have the money there?
We do have funds there, yes.
And again, I don't know that number that they have in their account, if it's tied up to, to coaches, and it's not really there. I don't know. Like, that's what I don't know. And I don't want to seem like a jerk, but my only concern is if, if it's an organization that's raising money for themselves, and we're sponsoring, I, I don't know. That's just my outside, that's my inside thinking. I don't know if anybody agrees with me or anybody has anything else to say, but it's just, those are big numbers to be looking at.
I, I thought the same thing. But again, volunteering with the swim meets a couple of times, I don't think they're really turning a profit as much as they, as they are providing the service. And this is about the one ask we get from them every year, right?
It says that we typically waive the fee for them before, so.
Yeah, we don't, 800 bucks for a group of 40 kids, I think, isn't a bad deal. I looked at the bank account as well, but inclusivity, I guess. It's, it's, it's better money than resurfacing another tennis court.
They expect 200, over 200 swimmers at the meet.
Any other questions, concerns?
I have no further comments.
Oh, thanks. Sorry. Okay. Are you? You make that motion? Thank you, Counselor Carlson. Question?
Counselor, Counselor Carlson moves to approve the Clare's Home Kraken Swim Club request for $800 towards the pool rental cost for the Clare's Home Swim Meet on June 21st and 22nd.
All in favor? Posed? Approved?
A quick question?
Too late.
No, it's just a comment on the, I just was reading that, right? The motion read that we're donating the 800 bucks, but also donating the equipment and stuff from the town for the barricades and the setting up. Is that also, right, that's a part of that motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I just heard. Okay, I just heard.
We can take care of that.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, next. Correspondents, Honorable Rick McGyver, Minister of Municipal Affairs, Abe?
So, few correspondence items here from Minis-, uh, from Municipal Affairs. First one is regarding, uh, Budget Twenty Twenty Four, which has been, uh, tabled in the legislature. Um, a few highlights of the correspondence, uh, they're highlighting the L G F F, Local Government Fiscal Framework, which is replacing the M S I oper-, uh, M S I, uh, operating and capital funds. Uh, bit of comment and conversation about that. Um, indication that the operating, there will be an operating portion to the L G F F. Uh, there's also some discussion about a new growth and sustainability grant that should be, uh, about sixty million, we don't know a lot about that, uh, grant yet, but we are told it's for, um, infrastructure for fast-growing municipalities, so there's more information coming on that. Um, thoughts, comments, questions on that?
Counselor Cutler?
No, I was just, anybody go to the one in Latbridge? Anybody go to the presentation in Latbridge?
About L G F?
Yeah, these guys were in Latbridge.
Yeah.
I didn't know about it, I heard it on the radio afterwards, oh, they did agree, I was like, I didn't even know about it. Did you go to it?
Uh, I've been to some of any of them.
Yeah, okay. It's the same stuff they've been telling us, though.
They're all the same. Any other questions, concerns? I C F Engagement, Minister McGyver.
So, the, uh, I C F Inter-Municipal Collaboration Frameworks, uh, the town is, uh, has, uh, signed one of those with the M D of Willow Creek. Those are set to, um, they're up for renewal, um, within the next year or so, and so this is fairly new legislation that was passed by the province, uh, to encourage urban and rural municipalities to get together, talk about the, the shared services they had, and to come up with, uh, an agreement structure, funding structure, to acknowledge the services, uh, the shared services that they have, and, uh, some of the services and recreation services that some of the urbans often give to populations in the, in the rural areas. And so, the province is reaching out as these agreements are set to expire, uh, to, uh, look for feedback from municipalities on how the agreements have worked, uh, what parts of the legislation need to change or be updated, um, cost calculations for the I C F agreements, et cetera. Uh, they're reviewing all of the, the legislative, uh, structure for those I C Fs. There is also a survey, uh, that counselors, uh, can fill out, uh, there is a link to that survey as well, it's open until April twelfth.
Counselor Cutler?
Yeah, hey, guys. So, I'm, I sit on the I C F Committee, uh, we did have a meeting last month, so although the governor's telling us we have to kind of get together, we've been preemptive with our M D and our local communities and we've gotten together. Our I C F has gone wonderful, uh, with, working with the M D of Willow Creek, uh, it's been a great collaboration and it's been very successful. Uh, I did fill out the survey, uh, on my views of, of the whole situation, but yeah, so we are ahead of schedule with reviewing these kinds of policies without being told to by dictation government.
Right on. Correspondents, Honorable Rick McGyver, Minister of Municipal Affairs, Ministers Awards.
So, you see, usually see these awards, Ministers Awards, they're about this time of year, they are looking to municipalities and library boards, uh, to have nominations for awards of excellence for municipal staff and library, again, library staff and boards. Uh, they look for applications or submissions in several areas, building economic strength, enhancing community safety, uh, partnerships, uh, again, public library services, uh, red tape reduction, service delivery enhancement, and awards to smaller municipalities as well. So, the government is accepting submissions until April fifteenth. Uh, if council has any recommendations for applications, we can, uh, administration can certainly look into, uh, applying, if not, just take it as information.
So, if council has any recommendations, Steve Metley, Abe in Monroe?
Will do.
Ten-four. Correspondents, Prairie Mountain Health Advisory Council, Abe?
Prairie Mountain, uh, Prairie Mountain Health Advisory Council is having a Zoom meeting to discuss workforce planning for the Calgary Zone, that is on March fourteenth from five thirty to seven thirty P M. Uh, there is a link here to attend, or to register, rather. Not much else to say on that one.
Correspondents, Dave Cleaver, Farmer's Market Business License, Abe?
Yeah, so we have some, uh, correspondence from, uh, local resident here, looking into farmers' markets and the licensing and, um, overseeing of those markets in town, they've asked specifically, uh, that the town look to include, uh, farmers' markets provisions and definitions into, uh, the business license bylaw to provide some oversight, um, on markets and particularly, I believe it's, uh, homemade products, um, that are a little higher, I guess they would call them higher-risk type of homemade products that are sometimes sold at markets. Uh, we'd have to, administratively, we'd have to look into, uh, the bylaws and the farmers' markets processes, um, in order to provide a recommendation, recommendation to council. Farmers' markets are obviously a, a very well-known, um, process and they're overseen provincially, um, through, uh, Alberta Health and through, uh, societies and, and different legislative processes. Uh, I believe the request here is more specific to, uh, well, it's for those, but also for local markets as well that aren't, uh, traditionally farmers' markets. So, again, we'd, we'd have to look into this, look into our bylaw and look into the processes and the different kinds of markets that we have in order to provide a, uh, recommendation to council, but, uh, any thoughts or comments from, from council on this one?
Counselor Cutler?
So, quick question regards to our contracts with our farmers' markets, does it say in there must adhere to A H S policies and procedures that we know of? I read it, it says must follow A H S policies and procedures, correct?
Yep, farmers' markets?
Yep.
Yep.
Then it relies on the coordinator of the farmers' market?
Yep.
Right? We've done our part as a town?
Yes.
That's, that's my, I get, I, I understand the definitions and those types of things, um, but as long as they're adhering to A H S policies and procedures in regards to food handling and food procedures, right, that's my understanding, correct?
Yep.
That's all I was gonna ask, too.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I think it, uh, when it comes down to food and food service, um, that's about the limitations of where the town needs to be, is, is with those recommendations, we don't have any authority or the capability or manpower to, uh, administer any, anything past that other than a recommendation to A H S, so.
And then there's checkpoints for that, if somebody has concerns, they can phone a certain?
Yeah, exactly.
Right?
It's just a matter of, I would assume that when we do hand out, uh, licensing for markets or business license for markets, they've got their, their A H S approvals
Correct.
uh, before they can have that license anyways, so, so we're, we're, where we need to be as far as my concern.
I would like administration to look at, into it further and get back to us with more information.
The recommendation to look at?
Yep.
Refer back to Admin Services.
Make a motion? Counselor Carlson made that motion? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to refer the farmers' market, uh, and business license correspondence to Administrative Services Committee for recommendation.
All in favor? Posed? Correspondents, Clairs Home District F C S S, Abe?
So, uh, the Clairs Home and District F C S S is having their annual volunteer appreciation Uh, that is going to be held Tuesday, April sixteenth, uh, from six to eight P M. at the community center, and council is invited to attend. We do need to R S V P. I can, uh, take some names, uh, pass it on.
Who can make it?
I'll be there volunteering.
Or you're gonna be there.
I'll be there volunteering.
Oh, I know, that's after.
Craig will be there.
I'll be there.
Diana?
I'm, 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 I'll let you know by April eighth.
Okay, sounds good. Just let, just let them know.
Yeah, I'll let them know by April eighth.
That works. But I can, everybody else, I can
Yeah, I can go.
let them know.
Good for you guys.
Thank you.
Go represent. I'll be too busy volunteering someplace else.
Request for decision, cell phone policy update. Good.
Missed one, yes.
Evaluation Area Structure Plan.
Oh, wasn't done, my, my.
Sorry, I said, I thought you said evaluation, sorry. Yeah, I did.
Nice, eh? Look at that. What a beautiful thing.
Okay, so, uh, looking for council to set an open house, uh, for another area Couple of proposed dates here would be March twenty-fifth or April eighth at six P M. This is, uh, right in front of council meeting, the same way we did the last one, uh, for the, uh, A S P that council, uh, reviewed tonight previously. Uh, this is for land on the, uh, south of town, right adjacent to, uh, Highway Two, between Highway Two and the golf course.
Where the golf site should be.
What works?
Either one.
I think the twenty-fifth is good.
Everything's ready to go, right?
Yep.
Administratively, you guys are ready?
Yep, and, and they have requested the twenty-fifth.
That's right. Yeah.
I'll make the motion. Just set the open house for March twenty-fifth.
Counselor Zimmer made that motion? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to set the open house for the Evolution Land A S P for March twenty-fifth at six P M. in the town of Clairs Home, council chambers.
All in favor? Approved? Now, request for decision, cell phone policy update, Abe?
So, we talked about, council reviewed this, uh, policy review at last meeting. Couple concerns, uh, I think, uh, legitimate concerns with, uh, some of the processes that administration was proposing, and so what we've done is we've, um, created a, a process whereby, I guess I should back up a little bit, this is for the cell phones for business use, um, policy, and sometimes the town requires that some staff will need to use, um, either working away from the office a lot or, um, are expected to kind of be on call a little bit, so the town will provide, uh, cell phones for those staff, and this is the policy that outlines how those cell phones are supposed to be used by staff. Um, at, at the last meeting, we're recommending, um, that we change it to allow staff to purchase the phones back, uh, or the phones from the town, once they leave, the phones that they have been using, uh, and there were some concerns from council about, um, data privacy, uh, sensitive information for the town, so we have included a process in here, an application form whereby staff are signing off saying they've, uh, cleaned all the apps, the accounts and the data, uh, there's also a process to ensure that the, uh, town supervisors, uh, do the same thing, discontinue accounts, et cetera. And so, we've got, uh, we've got that process built in. Um, there was some question as well about allowing, uh, staff to keep, uh, the town phone number. Administratively, we don't have, uh, we're not overly concerned with that, um, as, uh, likely the people who have town numbers, uh, have had them for many years, and we would like to be able to provide that and create a new number, uh, for those staff, for the new staff in that new position. Let the number go with the person, uh, not with the position. So, that's, that's our perspective, um, our thoughts on it.
Questions, concerns? Counselor Cutler? Go ahead.
My question is, who cleans the phone off before the person takes the phone?
So, we'll be doing that, it'll either be the supervisor, um, or our, uh, corporate services director, uh, will do that. Certainly, the corporate services director will see to it that all counts are, um, discontinued.
I've just never, it just doesn't sit well with me, I've just never heard of that before, where the person gets the business phone after they leave.
Right.
Uh, even though it's all cleaned off.
Right.
So, that's.
Kate? Counselor Cutler?
We don't have a lot of use, you know, for those phones after someone's had them for a few years, so that's not figured.
In my opinion, if somebody wants to leave the town and take their town phone number with them, they can have it now, so I'll make the motion.
Counselor Cutler? Any other questions, concerns?
I just don't know why it's a, why they'd want the phone anyway.
Well.
Right, it's, it's, it's a town, it's a town, it's a town phone, so when a new person comes over, all the contacts, everything that he's gonna need is sitting there, that is all property of the town, so that goes to the new person.
But that information can be transferred over to the new phone, too, right? So, that, I, I get it.
So, what's, what's wrong with that phone?
That phone, probably nine times out of ten, is four years out of date anyhow, we're gonna have to get a new phone for the new person anyhow.
Can they, can they still phone with it?
No, that, 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 welcome, no, it doesn't matter. Oh, no, I need my fifteen to do my work now, so I, I, I've, I've struggled with it, I've had a couple of conversations, I don't understand either why somebody would want to take their town number to keep getting phone calls for the rest of their life, but, yeah, I, I mean, administration doesn't see a problem with it, and we can make a hundred and fifty bucks off an old phone, then we get to go buy a new phone, whatever. I made this last two weeks longer than I should have when I asked the question last week.
Yeah, private, private companies do the same thing.
Yeah, they do.
Two, I worked for two companies and it was the same thing, right? They just give you the phone, they, they wipe everything off.
Did you give back your old iPad? Did you? Yeah?
What?
Your old iPad from last term? Did you have to give him back?
No.
Well.
Didn't have to, but I had, what am I gonna do with it?
With the town?
Who's making the motion?
I did.
Did you?
Yes.
Oh, count the question.
Remember, I said if they want the number, they can have it, I'll make the motion.
Was that the motion?
Would it exactly like that, please?
Question?
Uh, moved by Counselor Cutler to adopt version two point zero of policy, one point one, point two-five, cell phones for business use as presented to meet current needs and practices.
That wasn't the motion I heard.
That's exactly what I said.
All in favor? Approved? Posed? Oh. Okay, request for decision, arena sports equipment. Are you ready, Abe? Sorry.
Yep.
Moving too fast.
Oh, you're good. Uh, so, yep, it's up there. The town does have, uh, some donated funds from the estate of, uh, Ruby Thomas, uh, in her will, she had asked that, uh, the money that she was passing on, which at the time into twenty fourteen was about thirty 2014 was about $30,000, be used to create a trust fund for purchasing skates and her other sporting equipment for use by children. You recall, a couple of years ago, we did, council did approve some expenditures from this account. There was some loaner equipment, library loaner equipment, that was dedicated to the library, they now oversee that. And there was also some inflatables, obstacle course type materials, equipment down at the pool. There's still a fair bit of money actually left in that account. And the recreation department is, is asking to make some more purchases, to do some summer programming in the arena. And so looking to do some partnering with FCSSS as well. Looking to buy some, some portable basketball nets, and some basketballs and different equipment they would need for that, along with volleyball nets and some ball hockey. Ball hockey equipment as well. The total for that is $3,780. And so, administration is requesting that council approve that expenditure for that equipment.
Questions, concerns? Counselor Cutler?
So that FCSSS team group is still the same one that was operating out of here, or is it a different one?
Different one. It was out of Mackinac Hall.
No. Arena.
But it used to be-
Yeah, right?
But that's still attached to FCSSS?
Yes.
Okay. Who will be managing this equipment?
Well, it'll be between the town and FCSSS, it'll be stored when it's being used, offseason for the arena, down at the arena, and there is some storage when it's, needs some space during the hockey season, we've got some storage to do that. But the, the team group will be managing it, but recreation also will be using it from time to time for some programming as well.
That's my question, so is, is this, is this for the public? If I came into the town, could I borrow a couple hockey sticks and, and, if I rent, like, does it come as a, what I'm asking is, are we, are we buying equipment for the team group alone? Or some recreational processes, but it'll still be available to the public, kinda like the stuff in the library, right?
Not, not the same way, though, there will be specific times.
Right.
There will be program, programming times for it, yeah.
Right, there'll be programs ran with it type of thing for the community?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's perfect.
Counselor Zimmer?
Obviously, I was just looking for more clarity on that, too. So it would be open for anybody to use the stuff? Is there a reason why some of the stuff that we already have isn't used? Like, if they want to use, whoa, like basketball nets, like we've got gyms, we've got outdoor nets, like why do we need to set up nets in the arena to play basketball, or pickleball, or volleyball? We got schools with volleyball nets and other gyms, and outdoor volleyball nets that are just sitting there. I'm just, I'm, I'm all for giving them something to do, it's just I know we've got a lot of this already, and then has the arena staff been notified that all this stuff is gonna, there's hardly any room in the arena as it is, where's all this gonna go?
Yeah, so, recreation has connected with the infrastructure department, they know that it's gonna be stored down there throughout the year. They said they don't have any concerns with that. In terms of other equipment and sporting, potential sporting venues, recreation is looking, recreation department is looking to create some actual programming in the arena in the offseason, and so that's why they're, that's why they're proposing to do this.
And I, and I- Okay, so if a group of kids came up, like 14 kids wanted to play ball hockey, they would get in contact with RAC, and then somebody from the RAC department would set that up and supervise it?
Yep, yeah, and-
And to pay for the arena and stuff comes from who, those 14 kids that wanna play?
I doubt that, the programming still needs to be developed, but that's the intention, is to develop some slots, some times in the summer whereby people could come and just use the equipment, right?
And to your comment of, you know, we got schools and stuff, like, the schools are hard to book, they're expensive to book, they're, they're not easily, so if we had a program where these were accessible, then might be a little bit more advantageous for some of these community kids to, to do some of those sporting things, but I, I know the schools are pretty rigid with their, especially during the summertime and stuff, so I, I see the progress, I see the understanding, but, yeah, I just worry about who has access.
Questions, concerns? Counselor Ross?
Would there be availability of people knowing who they can contact? Would that be made known, and, and, you know, would there be a cost if they use the equipment too, you know, from that?
Yeah, so we'll, it's something we'll have to promote, put on social media, put out in the town news, and put up on the programming schedule when the time comes. And I, I believe the plan is to have the equipment for use for free. So, I don't wanna be quoted on-
Yeah, no, and I think it's more, I think it's more of a programming kind of situation than a borrowing situation, I think it's-
Yep.
It's to have access through recreation, through our engagement coordinator, and through these types of programs in FCSSS, to have the availability to provide these services, it's not gonna be, I wanna rent out two pickleballs and a racket to go play some pickleball, it's more of a, a, yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I think it's great.
Counselor Kettles?
I'll make that motion to approve the sporting equipment purchased as discussed.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to approve the sporting equipment purchases as presented, up to a maximum of $3,780, including GST, to be funded by the estate of Ruby Thomas.
All in favor? Posed? Approved. Request for decision, Porcupine Hills Lodge, letter of support. Abe?
So, Porcupine Hills Lodge is, we've talked about this previously, council, they're are looking to do an expansion, very much needed in the community, and so they do have land, and they have started down the path of constructing new housing, they are looking for grant funding, previously council sent out a letter of support for a provincial grant that they had applied to. We have received word from the, the board, the housing board, that they need a letter of support from council acknowledging that they understand that the Porcupine Hills Lodge may have to borrow up to $5 million, and that the requisition, it's hard to approximate how much the requisition increase will be to the town from this expansion, but they have estimated somewhere in the neighborhood of $35,000 in the additional annual requisition to support the expanded units and the increased operations. So administration is recommending that council send this letter, we do have draft copy there. Noted in our housing needs assessment, housing of all forms are needed in town, and particularly housing for seniors.
Comments, questions? Counselor Cutler?
I'll make that motion. I have no questions or comments.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to send a letter of support to the Minister of Seniors, Community and Social Services for the Porcupine Hills Lodge and Seniors Foundation Housing Expansion, and that the letter includes support for the Porcupine Hills Lodge to borrow up to $5 million to complete up to 38 new seniors' housing units.
All in favor? Approved. Information brief, FCSSS Social Needs Assessment. Abe?
So, I just have to find it here. Find it.
It's a thick one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we read it, you don't have to find it.
Okay, yeah, I read it, it's good, okay. So, not gonna review the, the assessment, of course, but, um, this is just a follow-up to the social needs assessment. We, administratively, we asked FCSSS to follow up, council received a social needs assessment probably about eight, nine months ago now, from the Rural Development Network. And the recommendations from the social needs assessment were to educate the community about the resources and awareness of, of resources for different social issues. Issues are intertwined and complex, a lot of the social issues that we see in town, prevention is paramount, the reduction of silos within the community, they felt there were some communication gaps between the different groups. And they encourage community engagement to discuss and more education on social issues and whatnot. So, FCSSS has highlighted some of the things that they're doing, they're coming out of that social needs assessment, some awareness presentations, bullying, for example, AHS vaping, what parents need to know, working with local schools for presentations and tours, had the, FCSSS actually had grade one students through here last week. They post regularly on, on Facebook in the office, community bulletin boards, a lot of their programming, they, they are connected with, or connected with people who do a lot of programming, or they themselves do a lot of programming, so they're actively promoting social services in the community. They took part in Kindness Week initiative, Pink Shirt Day, anti-bullying. Of course, they coordinate ongoing monthly inter, inter-agency meetings. They work with many different, different groups throughout the community, they have recently applied to RDN on a homelessness project as well. So, lots of housing needs, connecting seniors with housing subsidies and information on how to get housing subsidies. Rental subsidies, I should say. So a lot of preventative activities as well, family, the Free Family Day skate. We mentioned their teen, their teen group earlier as well, that they assist with. So a lot of preventative measures, a lot of positive actions in the community. There are some, some issues that they note that they can't address, they don't have the capacity, or they're outside FCS mandates. So, a lot of the housing issues, they don't have the ability to provide low-income housing, for example, that's definitely out of their mandate. Just providing some of the basic needs, seniors aging in place, and just a few other things they noted in there. Any comments, questions from council?
Counselor Zimmer?
I do appreciate the social needs assessment, 'cause you get to find out what all needs to be done. How is this promoted? I find that this is a lot of work, and there's a lot of pages, thank you to the people who put this together, for six kids to answer it, and like 100 people in the rural community, so for 106 people to actually take the time to fill this out, like, can we not get the word out there more, like, how's this distributed? Like, how is only six, six kids taking this, like?
Yeah, yeah, that was, so that was through the initial engagement, when they did the assessments, that, that added to the data, that was one of the issues, was it was a small sample size. So I think, connecting with people, which is always a challenge for, for municipalities, getting the message out, and, and RDN in particular had issues connecting with the youth, to get a good sample size on some of the issues, that's one of the reasons I think the, the report initially felt a little flat with, with council, is because of the small sample size and the conclusions that they drew from the limited data that they had. And council was, was quick to kind of point out at the time that it wasn't necessarily representative of how integrated different services are, and different service groups were with, in the community.
So going forward, like-
Yeah.
What are we gonna do, like, is somebody actually gonna go to the schools and the clubs and the stuff and talk to people, or?
Counselor?
We hired somebody to do it. They did it.
RDN did it.
Yeah.
RDN did it.
A, a company did it.
Was it part of this?
Yes.
So we hired somebody to get us six replies?
Yeah.
Correct.
They could've done that.
Okay, so what are we doing different next time, then? 'Cause that seems like a lot of time and money for six replies.
That's something we'll discuss next time we do it.
Perfect.
Right, that's what I mean, there's nothing we can, I mean, they, they did advertising, they did-
Maybe council could do it.
Right? I'm just, I just wanna know, like, what was done as a thing, right? Like, clearly this didn't work.
This was the second part of the report as well, the housing report was the first part, but, yeah.
And this was just for the, that six responses was just for the youth?
Right.
We hadn't, we were able to get more than six responses from the community, significantly more than that, from the community, the broader community.
And they did do, they did do groups?
Focus groups, yeah.
Focus groups and stuff like that, so they're, yeah, this, this-
I, but I, I think it's a valid concern. And, and the, the question, we're always trying to find how we can connect with people better, and so that is a question we are gonna have to ask ourselves, how do we reach people? How do we help these consultants reach people, reach our residents, do a better job of reaching them? We need to think through that process a little, a little more, particularly on the heels of the lack of engagement.
Well, I think-
We'll take that for-
Well, even with the low amount of responses, I think it gets our social needs pretty mapped out for us, it's pretty on the money, I think.
For 170.
Well, it, it also comes down to the fact that people have to be willing to engage as well. You put it out on social media, you put it out in the newspaper, you, you try to engage through recordings of meetings like this, people still have to have the desire to engage in taking a survey. If, if you don't get that engagement, short of tying it in with a census, which half of this information we should've gotten, been able to get from a census to begin with, it's, it makes it challenging, so when you do see that you've got 106 replies, it, it feels light, but a lot of the data is collected in other, in other ways, in other areas, so you do get, you might not have direct engagement, but you do have data points to gain from, so.
Cool.
I noticed I jumped over the financial statement, Abe?
Yes, so the financial statement as of February 29th, year-to-date, expenditures and revenues for the town? Questions?
Looks fresh.
Questions, concerns?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consolidated statements as presented.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to adopt the consolidated, consolidated statements as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Information brief, coffee with council. Abe?
So, council held its first Coffee with Council session on Saturday, had about a dozen people come out, and the mayor asked that we prepare a quick info brief on the topic, and just turn it over to, to you, council, if you wanted to add anything from-
Council Meister?
I think for being as cold as it was, the attendance was good, and there was great ideas, and people that showed up and actually wanted to engage with us, that was excellent.
Counselor Kettles?
Apparently I can't run the microphone. Yeah, I thought it was a great day, again, given the weather, maybe that worked- again, given the weather, uh, maybe that worked for us, I don't know, nothing else to do. Um, nope, everybody came with some ideas and, uh, uh, nobody had a big agenda they were trying to grind, so we just, uh, took some ideas and, you know, it takes a while to, uh, chase down some of these things, but, uh, I think, uh, I think it was a good day. Um, look forward to the next, uh, the next, uh, few.
Counselor Ross?
I think with the weather and everything and, and the people that came, they were interested in their community, and they wanted to see changes, good changes, and they, uh, imparted things that were good information.
Perfect. So the next, uh, the next coffee with council is March nineteenth, Tuesday March nineteenth, from seven to eight PM, and that is in council chambers.
And the buzz around town is there's gonna be people here.
Perfect.
They couldn't attend the Saturday one.
Really?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Burn them. That's why I'm gonna be sick that day.
Yeah, I do have a complaint.
I'm gonna identify as council caller.
Information brief, strategic plan report, Abe?
So this is an update on the strategic plan, uh, for council's term. Uh, we've got all updated information on the action items and the priorities for council. Uh, any questions?
Everybody's happy?
I like it.
All read good? Okay, take that for information. Information brief, council committee report.
You're welcome.
Anything you wanna add?
I'm just saying I made mine longer again, just because there was complaints.
I don't think it was a complaint.
Perfect. Take that for information.
I think you took it long.
Information brief, council resolution status. Any questions, concerns? Anything to add, Abe?
Nope.
Yeah, we gotta add more, 'cause we're all completed.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Looks like Tara did all the work.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Kind of, Counselor Cutler?
I'll make a motion going in camera.
Adopt the information.
Oh, they adopt the information. That's what I was doing.
Question?
Move by Counselor Cutler to adopt the information items.
As presented.
All in favor? Approved. Counselor Meister made a motion going in camera, question?
Move by Counselor Meister to go into in-camera at eight thirteen PM to discuss inter-government relations, FOIP Section twenty-one, confidential evaluations, FOIP Section nineteen, uh, business interests of the third party, FOIP Section sixteen, and advice from officials, FOIP Section twenty-four.
We are in camera. Camera off?
All in favor.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to come out of in-camera? Counselor Kettles? Question?
Move by Counselor Kettles to come out of in-camera at nine twenty PM.
All in favor? Approved. Counsel, next?
Uh, item twenty, yeah, sorry, item twenty-one B, confidential evaluations.
I'll make a motion for that item.
Question?
Move by Counselor, uh, Cutler to award the twenty twenty-four Northeast Infrastructure Engineering and Construction Supervision Contract to WSP Engineering in the amount of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars.
All in favor? Approved.
I had to remove myself for conflict of interest.
Next?
I'll make a motion to hire Cohen Cutler as junior lifeguard at the Claire's Home Aquatic Center.
Question?
Move by Counselor Zimmer to hire Cohen Cutler as a junior lifeguard at the Claire's Home Aquatic Center.
All in favor? Approved.
Congrats, slapshot.
Next?
Thank you for having me back.
Who's?
I'll make the motion to proceed with option two.
Question?
Counselor Meister moves that administration proceed with option two, um, advice from officials, uh, item twenty-one E, as discussed in closed session.
All in favor? Next? That's it? We are adjourned.
Are we all in favor?